Select board meeting on September. I would like to not be interrupted by technology. I'd like to call this select board meeting together, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, first thing on our item is um warrants and I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll number twenty-three for one thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars and eight cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Right. I'd like to make a um motion that we approve accounts payable number twenty-four for eighty-five thousand six hundred fifty-six dollar and fifty-six cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
And that one is the reason that so much is because that's the RF um, the RSU.
Okay.
Monthly, yes. Monthly. Alright, I'd like to move that we accept payroll number twenty-five. And I had the numbers and I just lost them. Thank you. For one thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And lastly, I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable number twenty-six for forty-two thousand five hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And the reason this one is high is this one is uh paying our, I believe it's quarterly transfer station uh bill. And actually, I don't know if you've read the news, but the uh Alna was trying to um have some conversation about lowering this and they weren't successful this year, but they're planning on revisiting that again this next year. And uh I'm hoping that Westport will be part of that discussion. We may be able to bring this cost down a little bit. Alright, on to minutes. I'd like to move that we accept minutes for nine uh September ninth nineteen twenty-four select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Twenty twenty-four, so.
Nineteen twenty-four.
Hundred years behind.
Uh twenty twenty-four.
Minutes have already been.
Were you, were you here for that meeting too?
I was. Alright. And then we added. And I also have uh minutes for uh September tenth, twenty twenty-four. So I'd like to uh, and that was a short meeting that was to um really to um look at uh an R and P that we needed to approve. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve that meeting uh on September tenth, two twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, citizens issues. Do we have anything from here? Uh, I'd like to mention one that came today. And basically um this is somebody from the cemetery committee. And they're looking to put a stone uh for Dee Dow in their family cemetery. And um right now the property is used as a rental and so um we're not sure how to contact the owner. I'd like to ask April to uh to take this on as a pass to talk to the cemetery committee and and maybe to the new owner to find out how to move forward with that. Okay. I'd like to move on to uh Rose. Anything happen with Rose?
Yeah, we started the place in Calvert, so the last road. They had a deep one on the main road to be. So we're trying to get Calvert in because it's been dry, it's been herded on wood. So I might get some. I got coal patch supposed to be delivered here within the next week or so.
Right.
And the work on East Shore Room by Williams Beach stabilizing the banking should be happening in the next week or so.
Oh wow, that's the one by um uh Debbie Williams?
Yes.
Do you need uh special equipments for that or anything?
No. Jack Shaw has been doing work for me, he's gonna bring an excavator down and put rocks, he's got bigger rocks and smaller rocks, so you kind of weave them in there.
Wow.
What was the timing again within?
The next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks?
Yeah. The road improvement is moving along. You know, the stuff, there's some trimming that's gonna happen pretty quick. I'm working on that, it's gonna happen with the border in a few months. With the remodel.
Great.
Will Jack need the whole road when he takes his machine to do that?
I don't think so. We did that cover today and we had doing work expecting ways, the longest we ever kept anybody sitting there was maybe four or five minutes, so.
So we don't really need to announce that?
No, and if there was an emergency, we always have material there that we can incorporate the whole year. That's the way we roll unless.
Thank you. And by the way, do you know everybody that's on Zoom with us?
Um, so I know we have Ronnie and uh Deb.
And Mario or Deb, did either of you have anything for citizens issues? I forgot that you two were on uh or or Zoom.
I'm fine, no issues.
Alright, thanks Deb.
Yep.
Ben, thank you for being here, Charlotte. Alright, um committee report, do you have any updates? Um, I'm actually curious to how it went when you were gonna talk to them about maybe the um the water issues?
Yeah, um, no, no real updates on the um uh planning board, other than we did have a conversation generally about the status of the report and you know, uh consensus appears to be uh we'll start thinking about it and start planning, but we're not going to actually do anything until we get the final report. See what that says, well, if anything they have, and then we'll. You know, there's a fair amount of groundwork. But uh otherwise, we're waiting on the final report. And I haven't heard, I, the last conversation I had with Dennis or Duke. It's about a week old. And uh they haven't heard anything more about where it's gonna go. Uh, in terms of the Friends or the History Committee, um they're not going on. Joan and Dave are gonna be hosting that now.
That's the Bradford's?
Um, yeah, yeah. And.
And you're the new chair of that committee?
Yeah, new chair of the Friends Committee, uh Ken Swanton. Swanton is the vice chair and then Jeff is the pressure and Gay is the secretary. So uh most, the more immediate issue of relevance is the new post uh office uh box. And uh we're gonna try to make a decision about that meeting on Wednesday or Tuesday. Uh, but otherwise, it's a real active lot going on uh uh as always. Everybody come to the exhibit, it's a great exhibit.
I spent two hours waiting for the electrician to do what they needed to do to finish, get the water on, so I had a great opportunity to.
Yeah.
To visit all that. Um, I just want to say I did contact the post office and asked them about where to put the mailbox. And in my thinking was right in front by the um by the driveway. And they suggested not there. Um, the woman's name, the the uh postmistress is Ashley. And she knows Westport very well. And she suggested that instead of putting it right there, because there are always boats and trailers and whatnot. She suggested as you're coming down and around, before you get to the latrine there. Uh, and you're coming down on the right-hand side, sort of where that little shed is, or there's that big sort of open space there. There's also, there's the um the guard rail here and the guard rail back here, but there's this open space here. She suggested putting it there, that way it would never be um problem for um mailman coming down. So basically, you'd have to walk from the house over.
And they will still give them space to turn around, back out.
Yeah, exactly, because they go right around. Yep, yep. The only issue that they ever have about adding any new mailboxes is if uh the mail person has to back up or turn around, but it's right on the road. I know I've been down there when somebody lived at that house and the mailman would just come right around there. So it's not an issue at all, it's just where to put it so that it doesn't disrupt. You know, if if the mailman wants to put something in there and there's a trailer there and it takes a while to 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 take care of that, so this way there would be no issue. So um that's where we would, uh I was trying to describe that to to somebody, I I think it was you all this past weekend, that it would be coming down before you you get around the corner.
So like on the right-hand side as you enter?
Yeah.
Would that interfere with the snowplow?
Shouldn't be, no more than any other mailbox.
Would be, because it seems like you'd come down with a plow, you you'd wanna use that open space to put some snow in before you hit the guardrails.
Oh, I think they would just hit the guardrail.
Is that, is that town property over there?
Yes. All of that is town property.
Okay, cool. Sounds like my deal.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Um, I, I want to apologize, I screwed up. One of the first things that we should have done is open bids today. And we do have two bids for um this uh newest session. And we will only open the bids, um but I I apologize, we have two bids. This is for the assessor, assessor's agent. Um, we'll be losing Evan as of the end of December. And we knew that when we hired him, he was the only one that um supplied when we um sent out bids early this spring. So this is uh the first one we have here is the contractor's name is Atlantic Valuation Service out of Scarborough. And um basically, uh and this would go from January first through June twenty, twenty twenty-five. His price for all work is fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and he has included uh a letter of interest and um an update on some of his di- di- different projects that he's done. We will review this during our uh our workshop on true tomorrow, so it's like before. The next. Maybe we can get copies of these for the week today and.
Yeah, handwritten.
Yeah. That's the second one. The envelope, please. The second one is from RCS Assessment Service out of Herman. And this is from Josh Berry. And he also um, his price is twelve thousand dollars for the next um six months. And he also has um information about all the different clients that they've served and whatnot and um.
Three copies for each of us?
Uh, an entire list of all the different kinds of things that that he has done with biographies of individuals and whatnot, so there's an entire packet here. We will look at both of these tomorrow. One is um asking for twelve thousand. Uh, the other one's asking for fifteen thousand, but we need to really look at um the the two and see.
We also need to sit down with Josh.
Yep, yep, yep. Alright, so I'm gonna give those to you right now. And we will meet tomorrow and um so unless we absolutely need to we'll have to see about, probably won't make a decision till the next time we meet.
If we could do an emergency.
If need be, next week.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, because it would be nice for that individual, whoever the individual is, to start sort of working a little bit with Evan. Just sort of make that transition.
Yep.
Alright. Um, select board business, um I'd like to send it over to April, April Winter Sand RFP.
Well, I remember this ticket right over the gym actually, because this is more his thing, I just plugged it into the template, so.
Yeah, April sent me a copy of her vibe, you know. I think we're all set to go. She can send it, you're gonna let people send it, do?
No, I do not. We probably didn't furnish me with that. I, I think, did Jeff pretty much spearhead this last time? I know it went to Hey, Tager's the one that reached out to me and said, hey, you're gonna do this, that's it. Trying to do this. Um, so yeah, I'll try to get a sense, and if you can give me some names, I'll send it around.
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the RFP request for proposals for supplying, delivering winter sand as written now so that it can be posted and we can start getting some um some feedback in. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, we need to amend a town policy, town security policy. April, you wanna talk to that?
Yeah. Uh, so this is our policy about uh who gets keys and why. We have a handy little table is the majority of the policy. Um, this policy is about our website now, if anyone wants to see it, your website, there are policies up there. Um, so basically, the select board has created this property management committee where they put together several property management um committees into one. And so we needed to sort of change it so that Jim, who is the chair of that committee, can have keys to various properties, he'll be maintaining. So we're gonna get you a ring keys. Um, and then with the move of the um helping hands and foible mailboxes down to the right house, um we're also gonna remove those folks from needing to sign out uh town. So those are the two changes in there. I think I highlighted them, hopefully.
Yes, yep. So I'd like to make a motion that we um approve the amended town security policy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, uh, let's go with the update on the electric sign progress. We've been working on this for quite a while. April?
Oh, I know way more about signs than I ever wanted to know. Everywhere I drive now, I do notice it. Interesting, electric background, okay. Um, so it's a whole new world. But yes, we are finally, I think, closing it on this and all the pieces are coming together. Um, so Jim Cromwell is going to handle the landscaping and the fill, that'll be necessary. We're not gonna put it where the current sign is, we're gonna move it closer to the bridge so you can read it on the straightaway. Instead of while you're navigating the curb, there's actually a pretty good spot right there that's outside of the um DOT right away, once we get a waiver from them, it's outside of the towns right away, it's just well, it should be pretty visible from the straightaway, so a little safer that way than our current sign. Um, so the landscaping and fill that labor, we're gonna be five thousand or less. I talked to the electrician, who's gonna need to run the power from the um stub hole. CMP puts into the sign and he said absolute max would be five thousand, probably coming in less than that. CMP isn't gonna cost us anything, they don't have to put in a pole, so that's good news. I found out we can insure it for fifty bucks a year through MMA, so that's nice. Um, free removal, um, we're not gonna have to do that actually, so I had my husband poke around just to give me a ballpark of what we might have to take it down and what it would cost. So I was wondering if that big pine would be in the way, but he doesn't think so, he thinks you could prune it and maybe a couple others um to improve visibility, but I think things, we probably don't have to have a takedown. So we're, our outside costs are coming in at about ten thousand, which leaves us the remaining twenty-two thousand to play with for the sign. Electric signs nowadays, you're not gonna get one for less than fifteen thousand. That's what it costs, fifteen all the way up to like, you know, twenty-five for the size range we're looking at. So I've been in touch with a whole bunch of companies, um but basically it came down to two that are really popular towns throughout, and use them. There's Northern Signs, um and there's NeoCraft, and they pretty much have the market corner. There's another company, but they're way up in Bangor, so they're more likely in our area. Um, and so we got a bunch of different quotes from them, from different signs, pretty different sized signs, but I think we've basically boiled it down to two. Um, so Northern Signs, they use a brand called Daktronics, they were uh asking for nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty. That would be with all the installation and the support work. Um, and that's a roughly four by five sign with a big metal pole for a support. Um, five-year parts warranty, two-years labor warranty. Um, and good resolution. And then NeoCraft, using a brand called Serus, they came in considerably lower at sixteen thousand two eighty-three. Um, uh similar, slightly better resolution. Uh, three by six, two poles with finials, so pull on either side with a nice little decorative round top, I believe. Uh, and a similar warranty, five-year parts, one-year. Um, labor.
Just curious, April, um did it come up with any of these companies about electric costs for running the sign or?
Hmm.
Like?
No, that's a great question, like how much will the
Yeah.
electric bill be?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm thinking if it's LEDs, it probably not be very much, that's what I'm thinking. LEDs are are pretty cheap to run. Uh, do we have plans for like when it's gonna be, can it be dimmed, can it, can we, you know?
Yes.
Turn it down?
Oh yeah, so there, they are um generally speaking, and I can't remember which company is which at this point, but I believe just as like an industry standard and I can double check with where we go with here. They're automatic, so if it's a cloudy day, it's gonna be, it needs to be brighter, the brighter it is though, right?
So you're right.
A cloudy day, it would dim, and I didn't, you can time it to turn off, like between the hours of like ten and six in the morning or something, we just wanted it to be off, we could do that. Um, so, yeah, there's a lot, and I think there's also, I believe, and you guys were here for this actually. At least on the Daktronic side, there's like a shield to keep it from, because people, some people are asking about the Ospreys and like the light blue. So there's like a shield, I don't know if that comes with the NeoCraft one or not, but.
You made a good point that the Ospreys nest is like.
Uh, like, they used to nest on a, yes.
Like, yeah.
That's very worried, remember when they cleaned the bridge, all that paint?
Yeah.
So loud, so obnoxious, days on end, like you drive across, you're like, oh my god. They seem not at all bother.
You know, they're very safe.
Keep coming back every year, yep.
Yeah, so I think they'll be okay, I don't think the sign is gonna be the thing that shakes them.
No.
Um, so yeah, I mean, I just plan, I think we just need to choose a company and go with it. It's not getting any warmer, the ground's gonna freeze, so if we wanna get it in before winter. We gotta get cracking, and we do have to spend, this is paid for with grant funds, we have thirty-two thousand left roughly um of ARPA funds, and if we don't spend it by the end of the year, we have to return it, so.
It has to be spent by December. But first of all, I wanna say that there has been a heck of a lot of work put into this, and thank you very much, it's just.
And Gay ahead before me, so I'm sort of standing on the shoulders.
Thank you, Gay. Yeah, yeah, but I mean, thinking about the landscaping, the electrician, the CMP, the, you know, the company itself and and just all the work that um has gone into that, so I'm glad we're finally getting to a place that we can do something. So it feels like we're definitely gonna be able to come in under what we had reserved for the um with the ARPA funds. My, my thinking is that the comparison between sixteen thousand two hundred versus nineteen thousand eight hundred, that's thirty-five hundred dollars difference. Um, and because there's no.
I would get size better too.
Yeah, and and actually the size of the, the one is actually three by six, which makes it longer. So you could actually put a little bit more there, it's shorter and long, it's actually twice as long as it is tall, three by six.
Mm-hmm.
And the other one is a four by five, which is almost like a square, closer to a square. Um, my, my thinking is, I, I, I would opt for sixteen thousand, the NeoCraft. Uh, what do you, what do you two think?
I like it. Well, what was the line we were leaning?
Yeah, especially because it doesn't seem, oh, and it's got better resolution. Um, so.
And do they have availability for this fall?
Yeah, they were similar, yeah, weeks, um and I think the other one order of signs was six.
Six to eight.
So, yeah, it's about the same.
So, any further comments or whatever, or we need to take a vote on moving forward with this?
Yep.
Okay, um Jim, did you have anything to add before we vote? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we uh move forward with this, um with NeoCraft. And um keep moving so we can spend that money before we lose it all. Um, so I, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Okay, thank you.
It's all yours, April.
And I think this will be, I know that, you know, change is tough, but I've been driving around and everywhere I see towns and the signs, I'm checking them out. And they're all like pretty tasteful, right? Like if you're driving through West Cassett, you see this very loud electric signs with the business advertising. But the towns do a really nice job, they all have cute little frames, and it's just a static message that's like select board meeting, town meeting, conservation commission and um you know, they can just, they can be very low-key and tasteful, so I think it'll be a real good fit to the town and not as um jarring of a change is some like fear, so.
Did you have any opportunity to ask about maintenance plans?
Not beyond the warranty.
Okay.
And so when I reached out to the clerk listserv about this, um we got a lot of responses. And by and large, the clerks were just like, we got, everyone's had them for a few years. So they're, you know, most towns, unless you're a city, you haven't had them for twenty years. Everybody's spent their ARPA funds on this very popular ARPA thing. So everyone's like, oh, we've had ours for four years, five years, three years, you know, it's all in that um range, and they all said it was wonderful, they love, love, love it, because of course, if you're the clerk, you're hiking up there to the sign.
And they haven't a hike that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was gonna ask, as I drove by one today and a couple of the light bulbs were out.
Yeah.
And I thought, oh, well, who goes and changes the light bulbs individually anyways? It was the sign with greater space between, like a fifteen millimeter between, I'm like, oh, that's pretty noticeable.
Right. Well, we do get five-year parts, so I should presume that would include LEDs, and hopefully it's just like a light break, and you just.
Well, I understood, I don't know, the Daktronic style, usually, they really are like.
Right.
They've been plugged and so.
Yeah.
And Jim, I think something to consider is whoever, you know, when that is fixed, to put that sign, that there's a place it can easily walk to. Because I know the one that's there now is dead.
And you were going right across. That's the other reason to move it closer to the corner, is you get a hill right out there flat and the water, it's gonna drain.
Good.
And, yeah, and then, then it's a matter of like, how you beautify around it, the spray. Somebody with a.
Horticulture ladies.
You know, this is the entrance to the town.
Well, we can do it the old time.
Yeah, I'm assuming we're gonna take the old one out.
We could reuse it, I mean, it actually isn't in good shape, because when Gay and I were up there looking at it, we're like, oh, this isn't the perfect, sorry, scratch, we thought it was.
Yeah. Can we look at access to the flagpole at the same time so that we can at least have somebody get in and out safely to get the flag from there?
I think it'll be the same air, close to where you're filling, so you're probably.
Yeah, so somehow consider that so that to be, even if you have to put like a.
Can we do a walkway or something, separate piece, but you know, we can just do one walkway to the flag.
Yeah.
You know, if you put a cover in there and fill over, you're gonna have to stay.
Anyway, we'll think about.
That has been a few, yeah, spares or something.
Yep.
Amy loves building, she's been doing stone steps, that's his thing now, as you might notice, if you've ever been in my backyard, it looks like Stonehead. It's literally, I don't mean. So.
So while we have you, uh I'm gonna skip down to the right house for a second and go down to um report on uh conversation with DEP and then the bike pedestrian, let you two, you you take those two and then we'll.
Okay.
And.
Um, John, it's good you're here actually, because I had a phone call from the DEP um last week at some point. Whenever we. Whenever we amend the shoreline zoning ordinance, we have to send it to them. They have to approve it because it dovetails with all kinds of state rules. So I had sent it in a while back and then if you don't hear anything in forty-five days, you're good to go. Well, we were right before the forty-five day mark and they gave me a call. Uh, but it's not bad news. Uh, basically, they went through it with a fine tooth comb. There's some, uh, minor things that they want us to change that the law changed since we last amended the shoreline zoning ordinance. Uh, so I can't remember them all because they made no sense to me, because I don't have that order. So I was like, yeah, sure, sure. But basically, my understanding, they're gonna send us something called a conditional approval. Which, uh, we attach to our ordinance. It's in force immediately. Uh, so parts, parts of it would protect the town from liability, so it's good. We don't have to wait till June to have that protection. And then, um. At the town meeting in June, they want us to pass it. And then we have a completely up to date shoreline zoning ordinance. So this has happened before, actually. He's like, oh, back in, we did a conditional approval back in two thousand eight, but. So, um, not a big deal, but something to know about. And I will, uh, I gotta write it up and let Gary know as well, because I'm sure he'll. Be interested in those changes and.
Set something you've been forward to, to us.
Yeah. I don't have the conditional approval yet. I just, he kinda talked me through the changes and I wrote them down and I'll do it in email to folks for you. Um, tomorrow.
All right, how about a report on bike pedestrian traffic meeting with LCRPC and DOT?
Yeah, so we were having a lot of, um, chatter on Facebook, on the Facebook group primarily about. Speeding and people walking, people being mess, someone drove by them really fast and. Other people being like, why are you walking on main road and so on and so forth. So I thought I would just reach out to the Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission and say, what do you do about? This. We have a very busy main road. We have people like to walk on it. Is there anything we can do as town? To address that. And she, um, was great, Emily Rabe. Uh, over at Lincoln County Regional Planning. And she set up a call with the DOT, uh, mid-coast planner and the DOT bike pedestrian expert. Um, so we had a really interesting conversation. Uh, kind of the takeaway is there's not like. A ton we can do, except, um. Uh, they suggested some of those like plastic things you put in the middle of the road or on the sides of the road to slow people down. So those are pretty cheap and that's something to consider. I just kinda figured they're gonna get run over in five seconds and. It's probably a waste of money. Uh, we could do more signage. So on our sections of the road, especially like town hall in area where we sometimes have pedestrians, it might be good to have. Some like slow pedestrian area type signs. Um, they did say. You know, we're never gonna have shoulders on this road. They put shoulders in where there's like a lot of. Traffic and there's a big destination. So like, Bus Bay's gonna have, because people go down that peninsula, we're never gonna get them, not in DOT. Uh, but they did say. Uh, it's worth putting into your comprehensive plan that you're interested in that, because when they pave, and they just paved recently, so it won't be for another seven or so years. They do look at that plan and consider it. So we say, hey, we'd like some more safety features for bikes and pedestrians. They might. Widen the gravel areas, they might, uh, consider shoulders where we have really like dangerous corners or bad visibility. Uh, so there's some things we can do to sort of encourage them to consider that. And then on our stretches, everyone, it's all up to us. But there are some really great grant programs they pointed me to. So if we wanted to put in, uh, shoulders, especially. And again, I'm thinking town hall area where we sometimes have a lot of walking around, uh. There's grants you can get to do that kind of thing. There's quite a few actually. There's an AARP grant that's really good. Uh, for communities that have a lot of elder population, which we do. To encourage walking and, um, pedestrian stuff. So I'll, I'm gonna look into those. We can't obviously do anything until we talk to town meeting and they say they want us to look into it. But I'll kind of put on the radar for the next town meeting and the next cop plan. So. Do long-term thoughts, but in the meantime, everybody slow down. And if you're walking on main roads, stay on the shoulder. Uh, and be careful.
What shoulder there is.
What shoulder there is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, next on our agenda is Wright House, uh, tree work estimates. Um, and this, uh, conversation came up because, um, we were ready to. Put on a new roof on the, uh, Wright House and, um. It was pointed out to us by several people that maybe we need to look at the trees that are around there. You don't wanna put a new roof on and then have. Uh, a tree fall on it. So, um. We've been getting some estimates to see, um, clearly there are some trees that need to be taken care of. And so, uh, April, you've worked on some estimates. You wanna share those?
Well, I haven't really worked on them. I remember we had, um, Richard DeVries brought in an estimate, uh, I think it was from. Uh, Hughes.
Yep.
Michael Hughes. And, um. Jim and my Jim looked at it together recently and, um. Thought that's been a problem for Tree Service. And I think, Tim, you've been working on getting other estimates.
Yeah, I've tried to get Fox to come in. The earliest they can come, look at it to do the estimate is November eighth. So we do have an appointment with him on November eighth. I don't think you wanna wait that long, but.
Yeah. You know who else does tree work down here is Bartlett?
Mm-hmm.
Bartlett, I've seen some signs, but I know they have a guy coming down doing estimates regularly.
I can give him a call. That's out of Augusta?
No, I think it's. More local.
I thought there was somebody local.
It's like a bark, um, or wait, no, no, sorry, uh. Bart Farm again, maybe is what I'm thinking of. Kind of my bees messed up.
Hmm.
Oh, um.
The guy, well, trying to coordinate this, the guy that gave us the quote for the roof. Obviously, if we don't do it this year, that's gonna be.
Cause if the price. Another thirty percent.
Right, right. Right. So I was wondering if we could find out from him, what's the latest? That we could, you know, physically have the roof done. And see if, see if we can just, you know, maybe take down a couple of those really scary ones that.
True, could maybe do the high-risk ones.
Yeah.
Get those out of the way.
Yeah, whatever.
Do you thought, are they all high-risk?
The last one on the road by the driveway, you look at it, that's. You know, I pointed that one right out. He's like, oh, no question. Then we went around back. You know, this is a tree scientist, uh-huh. But some of the ones that we agreed on off, but. He was like, this one's more of a threat to the house than this one. And I, you know, his. His knowledge trumps mine by far, because that's what he does. So we wrapped some ribbons around the ones that he thought ought to go. And as he mentioned, you're open to the weather. And pine trees, obviously wedges handy somewhere in there. So there's always the potential of the domino. Fact of, all right, you've taken these trees out, now there's less protection.
Right.
Yeah, another one can hit the other ones.
Then you got the. You're in the shoreline, you know, the.
Right, which means getting Gary involved.
Gary and Jim Wild, the two guys should be involved in that, because they just. I don't know what trees they need to cut that may illegally and, you know.
Well, one is forward and.
I think there was thirteen or fourteen of the ones, so yeah, these should definitely go.
That's a lot of trees and it'll be interesting to see what Gary, um, Richardson has to say related because of the shore fund.
Right. Jim seemed very confident. Those trees could go.
You can take out. So if you're thinning for like your view, you have to be. Very, you know, there's strict, strict rule, but if it's threatening your house.
Yeah, it is just the whole row, just right to the left of the house that are.
They're all the same age.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's the end one that's the worst, because it's still a big piece ready to, you can see the, the way it grew. The one whole side that's ready to go right towards the house.
Closest to the.
The last one in that row before the house.
Yes, yes, yes.
And the restaurant back, they're all got orange ribbon on.
Hmm.
And so Gary could go up and look at what, you know, Jim figured should happen.
Does somebody like Gary know that he could look at them?
No, I can make that call.
That'd be great, yeah. Just to get him involved. He, he knows that we're looking at this issue, but it'd be nice to say, now we have the ribbons on there.
Make it happen, because I want Gary to work this before anything. And. Do what started, you know.
I know last year, when the two trees came down, they came down between. The two sheds in the back and they both, you know, just barely missed. But it's like, oh my gosh, just, you know, the damage that could have been done. Um, and one hit the corner of one of the sheds, but it sheds not being used. It doesn't have any windows or anything in it. I think it has a hole in the roof already, but, um, anyway, it, it just. Is a reminder that something could happen there pretty, pretty quickly.
It would be bad, you know, because they're all sizable trees. The ones out front are small, those two decks are dead, who wants to go back? You know, a lot of them have just gone by, they're on the edge, they can only get so much.
Yeah. And we see trees fall all the time. I mean, I see them at my house and I'm not that far from the ferry landing and. I lost quite a few right on the shoreline just this, this winter, so.
There was old trees right there.
So we'll keep getting estimates. One, the estimates we have so far is Hughes has offered an estimate of four thousand dollars to do an estimate. Um, Swamp Creek Tree Service is estimating right now between eighteen and twenty-two thousand to take all those trees down. And then Hawks, we're still waiting for here. And, and you're gonna check to see if we maybe have another estimate there. Uh, okay. Um, and do you wanna give a little update? Because we haven't told, um, John, who's the new chair of the. Uh, about the little surprises in the building. Um, so you wanna give a little update on, uh, uh, on the work inside the Wright House?
So I went and asked me to open up the sink trap underneath the kitchen sink, which was fully plugged. And got that taken care of around the water again. The water refilled the sink, so it wasn't the trap. Somewhere between the kitchen sink trap, which is clear now, and the bathroom trap where there's a plug. So that's one issue. I didn't have a snake to use that night and I was going away the next day, so I just posted back up and left it. But in the meantime, while I'm down there, I look up and along the ledge in the back room, there's these two eyeballs looking at me and little whiskers going. So, yeah, and I took a picture of them. So there's mice in the house, which. That's another whole issue there, because if there's one that you see, there's a hundred that you don't see. That could put your stuff at risk if we don't get that taken care of.
And, and also the, the food pantry.
The food pantry, which is. Clearly, so there's another issue for us to take care of at the right landing. And so as your folks are there, maybe just have them keep a real good eye if they see anything moving. You know, try to figure out how they're getting in, where they're getting in, if you plug the holes and.
Do you know if anything's been done in the past to, any draft or anything?
Yeah, I haven't, no, I. Children come up. That I can think of, yeah, two years, I haven't gone on meetings, so, uh. So I, I haven't heard anything about it, uh, but we'll obviously talk about it, uh, during next meeting. At, at the end of the month, uh, and about children. So, uh.
Wednesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday, I know.
Do you, do you have folks in there every weekend?
Yes, well, yeah, uh, pretty much scheduled. Actually, we're meeting, I'm sorry. I was thinking back, we're meeting Wednesday.
And when, uh, we had gone in there to look at the, um. To look at the trim around the, um. The, the back porch. At that point in time, I did, I looked for traps and whatnot, especially in the basement, because I thought. There's food in there, there's boxes of food, there's, you know, and I didn't see any traps or anything. But I didn't see any sign of, um, any little critters either. So it sort of surprised me when clearly there. Was at least one in there. So I don't know if it's just starting. Or, um, or, or what. And I didn't look that carefully. It was just a, a quick, um, quick look, um.
Yeah, in the past, how, how was this kind of thing gonna handle today, because there's something. Or dollars, on the try to.
It might be a conversation to have with Gay to find out what's been done in the past and then let Tim know.
Yeah, the more I know, the more I can help. When I don't know, then so, and I think vice versa, and I can keep you up to speed on what. We're trying to do and.
One thing we've talked about is making sure we have layers on with, uh, the management committee, uh, somebody installing it to those meetings, uh, regularly.
That'd be great.
Yeah. And so just walk through the mice and what was, there was something going on between the two traps?
Yeah, so, okay, so on the water issue, the drains in the bathroom were running slowly, but they're draining. The kitchen sink plugged completely. So the kitchen sink, one and two come down the one central pipe and come down, which makes it impossible really to plunge it. Because they just do this. But the trap is in the base with the trap for the sink. So I went to open that, drain that all out. That's all clear from the sinks down to that trap. The bathroom sink drains. So some place between the kitchen sink and the trap for the bathroom sink, the drain pipe is plugged. And it seems like it's closer to the kitchen sink, because it didn't take a lot of water. See, once I cleared the trap, it didn't make a lot of water to have it back all the way back up again. So maybe like two gallons of water and it's back. So I'll work on that this week to get that. Unless you, you got a plumber on your stuff?
You got a snake?
And yeah, they have ants in the sea. So there is, uh, there's an easy open, not too far away where we can get the pipe open to the snake in. You can't put it through the, the old kind of trap that just use the drum trap. You can't really snake through it, but. There's an open end down here, we can open that up and snake back there.
So whoever we get, can you call?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because there's, there's a huge investment of, of stuff that not just. You know, things, but also time and organizing and.
Oh, and mice love to chew on paper and you have so much paper in there.
Traps up there here.
No, I was gonna put traps on. I got mixed because I was gonna use blue traps.
Yeah, we didn't like.
They, these guys want a live trap. I'm gonna move them over to.
Can't find it though. I said I had an electric one, electric pizza.
Well, that's much better than sticking.
So yeah, so we need to check with Gay to see what's been done in the past, because I can't imagine that this is the first time that mice have ever gotten in there.
Same.
Yeah.
Hard to believe.
So something could have been done because of the food, if nothing else.
Right.
But even if you all haven't seen signs, then something has been working. But it's not working now.
About, you, you probably just happen to see it by accident, you know, it's probably.
Right, right, but, but it's like that's time to true every year.
Yeah.
So it's like, it seems like every year they should have been coming in.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm sure it goes up in the back, so it's, you know, that you can't see it.
There were also a couple acorns on the floor, which.
There was, there was an opening, uh, when Steve Rowley and I walked around, uh, a few weeks ago.
By the door.
By the, by the basement door. It was a good size hole, at least this big. And usually a chipmunk could have fit in there. Um, so I don't know if maybe they'd gotten in then. He did seal it off. He immediately sealed it off. Uh, and as far as I know, it's still sealed. But that, that was an obvious hole, so, and, and it was. Right out in the open. I mean, right out at the doors, so we could.
Saw the mouse that was in the basement?
Yeah.
In the back, in the basement.
Okay.
Up on the side.
Yeah. But they can usually. Wouldn't be hard to get into. And you don't want somebody there on a Sunday afternoon, a little old lady like me. I'm sitting there, all of a sudden, here comes a mouse by my feet. So.
Yeah, and you know, the fact that I haven't heard of that goes because of. Or to, so let me, let me find out what's, is our thing, you know, obviously with the pet dropper, so if they're, if they're around.
Right, yeah.
People are pretty fastidious about keeping a place, they playing, so for sure. Uh.
You don't know how often people go into the basement.
Oh, yeah, well, that's a good point. I don't think there's any reason for us to go down there.
No, no.
Because that's all the food pantry.
Right, right.
So does this one, hands do anything for mice control? We should probably check with them too. Help a hand.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
They're gonna be, that's what the mice are probably going.
I didn't see anything, like, I didn't see any, any control items down there.
Yeah, I didn't either.
All right, one more issue, and that is the front, the window of the front door that got broken, which we think by a lawnmower tossing a rock through it. They took the frame up to Wiscasset Glass. They originally uh quoted me ninety dollars to replace the glass with the current frame using plexiglass instead of real glass. And then they gave me a call and said that the frame actually isn't good enough to reuse. So I said, okay, hold it out. It was a hundred and forty-four dollars for them to do a piece of glass in a new frame, custom made to the same size. It didn't have them do that.
Good.
In the meantime, a screen was found that fits the front. So right now you have screen on the top, screen on the bottom. I guess we can have a discussion about if we want to put storm windows back in. We can work on that. I don't know the value. I don't know how much time you're there in the winter time, but but they held off on the.
Good.
Hundred forty-four dollars.
Storm door.
This is the storm door on the front of the house.
Yeah. And in fact, I still have the glass in my garage. Thousands and thousands of tiny little pieces that I haven't taken to the dump yet. Um, in a, in a container. So that'd be another question to ask. Can you, can you all live with that? Because it seems like there's a lot of issues right now that are, you know, between the the water that that you hadn't had for months and um and that wound up being a lot more than we anticipated. And then now the tree issue. Um, uh, just and and then, you know, fixing the back uh deck so that nobody would fall through or any dogs would fall out or or people. Um, so that was fixed. And I don't know how much that cost, maybe.
Hundred, hundred bucks.
Hundred bucks.
And parks.
Um, so, but and that doesn't include yet the roof that that we've committed to doing. So, yeah, I've asked them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh. I will get back, I'll, she, what do you, uh, take a while, but.
Great.
I'll talk with Mike to see what they've done in the past, uh.
For farm control, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah. And you might let him know that there definitely are mice in there. Thank you. All right, uh, if there is no new business or any other business, and I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of?
All right, bye.